All right, it is 7:00 PM. I'd like to go ahead and call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, February 26, 2024. If we could stand face to flag and say a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Lanyan.
President.
Pratt.
Here.
Ben Alsberg.
Rice.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here.
Hanson.
I would accept a motion to excuse our three council members that are not present this evening.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have an opportunity for approval of the agenda as submitted or unless there are changes that need to be noted.
I would move that we accept the agenda as submitted.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. The chair right here is our podium. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to come forward at this time, I would entertain that.
I'll just go.
All right. If you could state your name and your address, please.
I'm in 1111 Cobblestone Court. I know I've been at every meeting lately, and I speak on behalf of the Plymouth Landing Homeowners Association as their president. And tonight, I'm just here again to voice my opposition of Dollar General being built on Williamson Road. I'll just name off a few things. You are all aware of this because you've heard this many times, but right now, we are really focused on the drainage issues. The Tobias Drain System, we feel, is already stressed, so we are working with John and Tammy and the city commissioner and a few others to really address those issues. But with the amount of us that have water issues in that subdivision, we feel very strongly that that needs to be addressed before we tap into or anyone taps into that drain system. We have concerns from neighbors whose houses, but up to the back end of that property, of lighting issues. If you can imagine someone building a back, you know, a parking lot in your backyard and having to deal with lighting issues and noise issues. One of our residents or neighbors spoke about hearing pallets dropping in the morning and the beeping of trucks backing up that tractor supply. So doing something to mitigate that and then just some sort of natural barrier would be nice to have, you know, to protect the property value somewhat, have noise reduction, all the things. We're worried about traffic, additional traffic right there. You know, we've got 98 homes on our subdivision, but there's a lot of little kids, you know, riding bikes and different things like that. So again, just here I am.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Do I have anyone else from the audience that would like to come forward at this time for public comment?
My name is Adam Normanin. I live at 320 South Cedar Street. I've lived in Williamson for 16 and a half years. I haven't been at a meeting for probably 16 years. Last time I was here, I complained about a freezer truck at the back of DNW that was running all through Thanksgiving, and the noise was driving me nuts. I'm here to protest or just say I'm against Dollar Dollar General, Dollar whatever that wants to move in. I don't think it's good for the community. We have a dollar store. Our general is going to put a lot of the, it's going to take a lot of business away from a lot of businesses we already have. And any jobs it creates, it's going to destroy at least as many. I don't like the element of dollar store. Discover the Charm is something, I don't know if it's still on the water tower or not, but you know, that meant a lot to me when I first moved here, and it's a very charming town. And I think, I think the Dollar General would diminish from that. And I think if you start walking down that road, it's going to decrease the charm even more. And that's about all I got to say.
All right. Thank you so much for being here this evening. I appreciate it. Anyone else from the audience that would like to come forward for a public comment? If you could state your name and address?
Podium is very short.
Yes, it is.
I'm Jim Carr. I live at 225 South Putnam with my wife Wendy. I'd like to also speak on, on our, to express our, we are against dollar stores coming into Williamson. Specifically, we do not feel that it fits with the goals and objectives as set forth in the 2015 City Master Plan. It, it goes against unifying the entrances to the city, and it does not, in our opinion, do anything to help the development of the downtown area and the local businesses. So we are against that proposal. We specifically also request a moratorium on the dollar stores so that the city itself and residents can have an opportunity to really understand what's going on with that, how it fits within the City Master Plan, and more specifically, knowing that we have a new master plan that's about to kick off. That's a really good opportunity for citizens to understand what, and give their opinion on what we want the city to be, on how we want the city to develop, and how do these stores really fit in and help support the infrastructure that we have and the infrastructure that we want going forward. So thanks for listening.
All right. Thank you for being here this evening. I appreciate it. Anyone else at this time for public comment? All right, moving forward, I've got our council meeting minutes of February 12, 2024. I'm looking for approval unless there are changes to be noted.
Make a motion to approve the amendments.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you so much. Also, I'd like to recognize that we have two council members that have arrived. Thank you so much. Sorry, you guys.
We went to the city hall.
All right. Well, that's all right. You guys made it, and I appreciate it, so thank you. All right. Brandon, you had an opportunity to review accounts payable.
I did.
Oh.
I'm going to make a motion.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
Make a motion in a second.
Thank you. So I'm looking for a motion for our city council meeting minutes of February 12, 2024.
So moved.
Thank you. And support?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting, or motion carries. Brandon, you had an opportunity for accounts payable.
I did. Review the accounts payable, low, large this time, because we made a lot of our tax payments out to the schools, to cattle, to NISA, to everybody. But there was nothing out of the ordinary, so with that, I would make a motion to approve accounts payable for $716,597.71. With the checks being EFT 753, checks 77362 through 77386, and ACH 743 through 771.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions regarding accounts payable for this evening? If not, I'm looking for support of that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Jenkins.
Yes.
Ben Alsberg.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyan.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
All right. And now we have an update from our senior center, and I see that you arrived. Thanks so much. Hi, Julie.
We were down there.
All right. Well, thank you.
And I'm like, well, something's got to be going on. Just call the mayor and find out.
Right.
Can you just let me hang back here and give the update?
Yep. If you could, please. Thank you.
Anyway, sorry we're late. I wanted to share an update. I kind of feel like there's a lot of things going on at the senior center, and so I thought, let me come on in and give you guys an update, and then I wanted to talk to you guys about renewing our millage this fall and November. First, back in October, I hired Ann McKinney, who worked at the Williamson Middle School for 20-plus years. She retired last summer and wanted a part-time job working for the seniors, so, with seniors, so it worked out perfect for us. She's our new activities and events coordinator and has been a fabulous addition to the senior center. I have no complaints whatsoever. She's doing some great things there. And getting a lot of new people in, working a lot with, we're trying to stick more local, you know, giving back to the community, working with the schools. I'm liking it. I'm liking it. It's going good. Next, I wanted to talk a little bit about our vision for the future. It's to have a facility of our own, one that has enough space so it provide, we can provide a variety of services all at the same time in different rooms, whether it's card games or exercises or presentations, lunch, and especially those critical services that require privacy and confidentiality. We do not have that where we're at currently. For those of you that haven't heard the rumors, the senior center is looking at purchasing the Maridore Building. Maybe surprised a few of you, but I feel like it's been happening for a while. I submitted a proposal to Ingham County Commissioners on November 7th to be considered for funding from the Elder Services Millage, which we all pay into, and then, and to be considered for funding from those Elder Services to purchase the building. I guess I should clarify that. I was on the Human Services Agenda December 4th. You gave a presentation on that request, and it went really well. Some of the key points from the presentation that I wanted to point out to you guys. The Williamson Area Senior Center provides critical services to the seniors in the Williamson area. This includes the city of Williamson, Leroy Township, Locke Township, Wheatfield Township, Williamstown Township, as well as the villages of Weberville and Dansville. This point grabbed a lot of attention because I used a map of Ingham County and then highlighted out the four townships and the city, which basically, it grabbed a lot of attention because it shows that we're about 24% of Ingham County. So everybody says the little town of Williamson, you know, and they think this little town of Williamson. Well, that map showed 24% of Ingham County, so that really grabbed the commissioners' attention. The other thing that I did was I pulled the 2023 voter registration data for, from the city and the four townships that shows there are 5,483 seniors, 60 and older, living in the Williamson surrounding area. Our community demographically is made up of over 35% of seniors, 60 and older. Again, that was another one of those statistics that commissioners just grabbed on to. They didn't have, never heard that statistic before. We're also in the process of evolving our senior center name to be more inclusive of the areas that we support. A couple of names that we're kind of tossing around for some feedback are Northeast, one word, Ingham Senior Center. We were also thinking of Senior Center of, again, Northeast, one word, Ingham County. Don't know what it's going to be. There are some things that I'd like to hold off until we get the funding, until we get a little bit further on down the road before we start changing names. I know most of you are familiar with the Maridore Building, but some of the things that we feel make it a great location for the senior center is it sits on 7.159 acres. The main building is 8,544 square feet. It has an additional storage building that is 1,200 square feet. There are 90 parking spaces, including handicap right by the door. The building, this is huge. The building is all one floor. You know, we don't have to go up to the third floor. We don't have to deal with the elevator. We don't have to walk down the hall. It, I could go on. So it's all on one floor, so it makes it really easy for the seniors. The main exterior doors automatically open as you approach them. There's a large deck on the, on the one side, a commercial kitchen, and there's the electronic sign at the Williamson Road entrance exit. Good, thanks. I believe we will receive something from the commissioners. I'm just not sure how much or the timing. I had a conversation with Jared Seifer, who is the Ingham County Deputy Controller today. It looks like we may be on the Human Services Agenda March 18th. And I was given the number. I'm not ready, I'm not ready to share it yet, but it's, it's looking good. And then it will go to finance, and then it will go to the whole commissioners for, for voting. Let me see, what else do I want to throw in here? So several years ago, we started a building fund account at the Williamson Huntington Bank that we've had some, especially since I've been looking specifically at the Maridore Building, the account has grown really well. I'm really, I'm really pleased. We've also got the support of the Williamson Senior Benefit Fund, who has earmarked funds for a new facility furnishing, furnishings, appliances, and equipment for us. We recently had Realtor Tom Barrett, who agreed to volunteer and represent us in the purchase of the building. With regards to some additional funds, funding conversations, I spoke with Julie Bricksy. She's a great contact. She's given me a lot of support. Alyssa Slotkin's, Alyssa Slotkin's office added Maria Moore to their staff to help with funding. So I invited Julie Bricksy, Maria Moore, and Chloe Maridore, the owner's daughter of the Maridore Building, out to the senior center on Monday, January 29th, so they could come through, they could see why it's so important for us to get not only a building of our own, but a different building than where we're at. Then I took, and I showed them all of our, I showed them all of the challenges that we've got at the current facility. And then I took them over to the Maridore Building so they could see what our vision is for the future. And it was a really, really good meeting. I felt really positive afterwards. I've also spoken to Debbie Stavina's office for additional funding. I meet with our local Williamson Sunshine Rotary Group on Tuesday, March 19th, so I'll keep you, I'll keep you guys updated as things proceed. I'm hoping within the next couple of weeks, I'll be able to give you more information. And then next, I'd like to talk about renewing our millage, our operational millage. We're going to stick with just a renewal, keeping it at the .25 for operational expenses, and I just need to know what you guys need from me to make that happen. I have met with Wheatfield Township and have already started that renewal process with them. I still need to get on Leroy Township's agenda, but I have met with Williamstown Township, and it's sounding like they already go. So I will be working with Wanda Bloom Twist as we go forward on that. And I'm meeting with Locke Township Tuesday, March 12th to start the conversation about that. Now, the thing with Locke Township after four years ago, when they didn't put it on the ballot, we realized that there's a sub-ballot that just covers Locke Township with Williamson and Weberville residents. So we're going to go for that sub-ballot because I think that's the fair thing to do. We don't want to put it to the, because Perry, you know, they've got, Morris, you know, has already got a senior center, so we're going to try to do that sub-ballot. I think that's pretty much it. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Julie?
No.
Steve?
Yep.
Can you provide us with some numbers as it relates to utilization of the senior center, not right now, but in the future?
Sure.
Something that would let us see what, what type of activity is going on, how many people are participating?
Okay. Again, my biggest challenge with the building that we've got right now is I have to cap how many people I have in that building. So I'd love to show you the numbers. We get, Mondays are usually our biggest day anywhere from 35 to 50 on a fairly regular basis. Tuesdays a little bit lower. Wednesday and Thursday are about mid-range, anywhere from 25 to mid-30s. But again, so much of this is, the space that we've got limits us. For example, and I just gave this example to the deputy controller earlier, this, earlier today. When we had our Veterans Day, we had to cap it at 60. I'm pretty sure, so we were turning, basically turning veterans away because we can't, we can only get so many people in that space. So my, my, my concern when I give you numbers is, it's going to be limited. There are 5,483 seniors in this area that I can't even market to because I can't have anything over 50 people showing up in that building that I'm in right now. You get me in an 8,500-square-foot building, I can do a whole lot more. And Monday through Thursday, it may be a senior center, but then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I've got other opportunities for that building and that area that can reach beyond what we're doing today.
Right.
Okay?
Thanks. Any other questions for Julie?
I got one just I care to ask. What square foot is the current senior center?
The main area in the senior center where we do, I want to say 95%, but 1,400 square feet.
Okay.
There is a small office, and there is a kitchen down the hall, but the main area where everything is done is 1,400 square feet.
This is the second story at the Commons?
Yep. Third.
Third story, okay.
Third floor.
Okay.
One elevator, and most of the seniors can't do the stairs.
Yep.
And we're in NISA, they could give you a whole nother, you know, idea of why it's so challenging. Any emergency whatsoever, you can't use the elevator, they would be having to take people down the stairs. If, I could go on.
All right. Yes, Scott?
He has a very discussion with the owners of the current building about alleviating your issues and making it a better experience.
Yep, he wants to spend no money on that building.
Yep.
Have you ever seen the parking lot?
Yeah, it's getting bad.
No, no, it's beyond bad.
The back parking lot's.
It's unsafe.
Almost unusable.
Yeah. Oh, oh, yeah.
They should just be gravel at this point.
Yeah. Yeah. But no, he, a year ago December, not just last December, a year ago December, he basically, we were going to move down to the first floor and, so he could renovate. Our, our area is the last room in the whole building that has not been renovated. The carpet is old, the ceiling is old, it doesn't meet code. I had the director from Ingham County Facilities come out and take a look at the building, I mean, our area, our space. The main space doesn't, it doesn't meet code, but I'm not paying any rent right now. The lease expires in July 2025, so at that time, he can start charging me a dollar per square foot. Now, I'm not going to pay that kind of money for where we're at and in the shape it's in.
Okay. Thanks.
I could take one more question.
Yeah.
Other than the Maridore Building, is there other options in the area that you're looking at?
For 70, I've been looking for buildings for seven years, and every single thing that has come across, come to us, I've figured it out, everything. This is probably the closest we've ever been to getting a new facility, and seven years ago, when myself as the lead building committee person and the other two women that were working with me, one of the first brainstorms that we did was, if we were queen for the day, what would that building look like? And I specifically said, we should get some goosebumps as I talk about it. I said, a piece of property that's over five acres, so we've got some green space. Like, right now, we partner fairly regularly with one of the daycares here, and, you know, they want to come over us, we want to go to them. They could come there, we could, you know, have the seniors teaching them, you know, how to plant a garden or something like that. And then I said, and I wanted a building 8,500 square feet. I had several other things, but this is, this is darn near perfect for us.
All right. Thanks, Julie. We appreciate you being here and making it over here.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along on our agenda, we have our action items. Our first is the appointment of Don Bixler to the Board of Review for a term to expire 1/1 of 2025. I'm looking for that motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have support? Thank you. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Rice.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyan.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Ben Alsberg.
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. Next, we have an appointment of Jane Reagan as an alternate to the Board of Review for a term to expire 1/1 of 2026. I'm looking for that motion.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have, all right, support? Thank you. Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy.
Yes.
Lanyan.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Ben Alsberg.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
All right. Our last action item is the amendment to our city manager's employment agreement. We do have a memo here in our packet. I will go ahead and turn this over to our city manager, John Hannifon.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So we had my annual review at the last meeting, and the product today in front of you is a result of those discussions. I guess I don't really have much to add on my behalf. I think we already went through that, so if you got any rocks to throw, now's the time to do it.
All right. Well, I won't ask for any rocks to be thrown, but does anybody have any questions regarding this in front of them, or would somebody like to make the requested action?
So I just want to say, I think that, I think all the amendments to the employment agreement are very fair. The stipend, the additional stipend for the, for the additional zoning work and stuff on the DDA is all things we've paid prior employees when they were doing those, doing those duties in addition to their regular duties. The switch to the other retirement system, that's a system that's already, that's still open for other employees. I think it's all very reasonable.
All right. Oh, yes, Steve. Sorry.
Just a couple of comments and then questions. I have researched the issue of how much a city manager is paid and utilized the documentation for the Michigan Municipal League. And we are very fortunate, in my opinion, to have an individual willing to work at the rate of pay that he's working. Generally, someone in that position makes $8,000 to $10,000 more than what our current city manager makes. Additionally, more than half of the individuals do receive an additional stipend. Not real clear on all of them as to why they're getting the additional stipend. As already was mentioned, we have two positions that are being filled, really three, if you include the city manager job, by the city manager. So I'm very supportive of it. One caveat is, in the agreement that he currently has, it indicates that his compensation can be assessed and reviewed after his annual performance. Now, we just want us to emphasize that, understand that it's not going to be a part of any other motion that we might do for non-represented individuals.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Anyone else have any comments or questions? All right. I'm looking for that recommended action.
So with the, with the way this, the motion works, are we adding in the three points separately as a substitute with the following terms? So do we just, just say points one, two, and three? Is that acceptable?
Yep. I think that would be sufficient. Thank you, Dan.
I'll make a motion to amend the city manager's employment agreement with the following terms of points one, two, and three in the attached documentation.
Seven.
Thank you. Thank you both. If there's no other questions or discussion, Holly, or, I'm sorry, Barb, will you call the roll, please?
Lanyan.
Yes.
Pratt.
Yes.
Jenkins.
Yes.
Ben Alsberg.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
Gilroy.
Yes. All right. That concludes our action items for this evening. Moving along to our discussion items. Our discussion item, our first point is our road diet, and we'll turn that over to our city manager.
Thank you, members of council, Mayor Gilroy. So we do have a couple of members from MDOT here tonight. As you know, we've had the road diet on our agenda since, I think, June of 2022. We had our first, our city open house for the road diet to reveal the plans in June plans in June of 2023. MDOT had a public comment period that was approximately, how long was that?
I think it was like four weeks.
Four weeks, and then they received a, a number of, uh, online comments. So the, the next step is, we do have on March thirteenth, which is a Wednesday, at the Middle School cafeteria, and we are having, uh, another public open house type meeting, um, where city staff, engineers, and MDOT will be present to, to further discuss the, the plans as, as proposed and, and take, take comments and feedback. So, like I said, our, our representatives are here from MDOT. If you have any questions around, we, we, we promised that he would come to a meeting prior to the public meeting, so.
Absolutely.
Here they are.
So would you mind, um, standing, stating your name, your, your role at MDOT? And thank you so much for being here.
Hello, my name is Andrea Strach. I am with MDOT, uh, University Region. I am a transportation planner.
All right, great, thank you.
And I'm Melissa Longworth. I'm the operations engineer at the Lansing Transportation Service Center, so I get the opportunity to work with, uh, local agencies in Eaton, Ingham, and Clinton County to, uh, issue projects and deliver projects throughout those counties.
Great, thank you. And then, John, on March thirteenth, I know we have another meeting that evening unless there's no, um, agenda items. Don't we usually have Parks and Rec?
I've moved to the third Thursday.
Oh, it moved to the third Thursday, okay, great. So we don't have any conflict with any other city meetings. Can you kinda go over what that would look like, um, just since we do have an audience here?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And how that, uh, open house is gonna work?
Absolutely, yeah, we'll have a, just a very brief presentation at the beginning, um, just a conceptual what road diets are, and then the specifics of what's proposed for this, this project route. So that's, that's how it'll go.
Great. And then, um, thank you so much for, for being here. Uh, how, how long have you worked on this particular project? And I know that you had your, um, open, um, public response period and everything. We know that this has been, um, for many years here at the City of Williamson, and so it, a lot of thought has gone into this, um, what we can do to make our, uh, main intersection safer. And so just, if you could give a kind of an overview, if you wouldn't mind.
I, I have learned of this project over ten years ago, and it's because I was a former employer of the City of Williamson, at the Department of Public Works. So, um, how this transpired is the city had approached MDOT, uh, asking if a road diet was possible on Grand River. And we said we can investigate that and looked into helping the city do a study. So after the study was done, uh, some other things lined up, and that's probably when the city contacted Melissa, right?
Yeah, so I've been with.
There's a lot of history to this project.
Right, and I'm glad you're able to share that.
I, I've been with MDOT thirteen years, but I've only been with the service center about the last three years. And so I know it started even before my time, that you guys were talking about this, because there's an impact study even in 2016, where you were looking at the, you know, this is a good idea, is it gonna improve safety, but is it also gonna operate well? So that's what the impact study looked at. It looked at, we know it has safety benefits and it's gonna be a great thing for that, but will it still operate well? And we look at volumes for that, and, and the consultants that you guys hired looked at the synchro models and the timing plans and all that, to make sure that it would still operate well.
And future models, future years, I think that's.
Future years, projection of growth, all that kind of stuff, to make sure that it was operating well. And that was provided us for review. And again, that was all kind of before my time, and then we started re-engaging, I didn't remember the year, but, um, you know, COVID happened, and then we started re-engaging again, and we pulled out our old plans, we pulled out the old studies and started talking about it more. So, um, I'm not sure the whole history of why it started and then it kinda stopped for a little bit, but after COVID, we re-engaged, and that's where we're at now, is, you know, we, we've been reviewing the plans that the city has put together.
We've been a lot over the summer. Yeah, and, you know, one thing that was, um, that did develop is that, uh, instead of using one hundred percent city funds, we were able to help the city find, uh, federal funding for this project. And that covers the project at eighty percent federal funding versus twenty percent local funding. So I think it really started to move forward because the funding source was identified for fiscal year 2024. So that really started to make things happen. If it was going to happen with federal dollars, it needs to be, uh, done in fiscal year 2024, which ends, um, September thirtieth, 2023. So, um, along with that process, uh, usually in federal funds, it needed to be programmed as an MDOT project, though as before, it was going to be a local project and done on MDOT roads through a permit process. But how the templates work, if you can think of all the buckets of money you guys have to deal with, the bucket of money needed to move to the trunk line side, and that's why we had to reopen the public engagement and do another round of it, because MDOT had, and trunk line has a significant standard, um, for public engagement. And so, um, you guys had met all of the requirements for the local project using your funding, but once you bring federal dollars into it, we need to kinda reopen that and do that again. And from that, we received over two hundred comments during that period. After that, we did also reach out to anybody who had requested, um, additional information. Uh, we used to frequently ask questions about road diets, some general information on how the project had started, um, and kinda sent it out as a boilerplate. It's really hard to respond to each individual require, uh, inquiry, so. So that's where we're at now. And we had the public engagement, yet after the number of comments, you know, we worked, talked to the city and thought maybe having another public, uh, open house would be helpful. There seems to be some information about, uh, some local aspects that are happening on Putnam versus what's happening on Grand River. So I think it's just an opportunity to kinda address those as a team.
Right. So at the, um, public open house that we will have, will we have the ability to have technology up? Will we be able to see those models for Grand River and for Putnam, um, those synchros to show that traffic flow? And then, uh, we can talk more in depth about, you know, what it would look like, what the future looks like.
Projection, yeah.
Um, for that intersection. And then, um, obviously have public comment at that time, uh, during that open house.
I think MDOT's looking at it as an opportunity to partner with the city just to do some, um, education and some public engagement.
Excellent, great, all right. Dan?
So, I know we have a lot of, a lot of questions from the public. I know I've gotten a lot of questions from residents on how this all started, where this all came from, why is the city pushing a road diet? You say it's for safety. You know, I came into this about six years ago when we first started talking about it, and it was all about getting a green arrow at the intersection. We wanted a green left turn arrow, and then we got back, the only way we could get that green arrow was to do a road diet. Is, is that, is that pretty accurate? That, that was what we were pretty much told was that.
I think it's, I don't think one is exclusive of the other, is, is what I think. And I will tell you that, um, from working at my former job, the intersection of Putnam Avenue and Grand River is one of the top ten congested areas in the tri-county area. And I think that the modeling shows that that intersection is not functioning at a, at an acceptable level of service now. So it's only going to get worse with future traffic, right? Um, I think that there are, there's no way, like, you can't put a left arrow without a left turn lane. So that's kinda, you could, I'm not the engineer, so, but I mean, it just makes sense, right? And, and I know from my experience, and a lot of cars mitigate that, that intersection and drive around to pop out at, like, what is it, mechanic and cedar? If you know you're turning, you kinda go like water and don't go to the intersection. Yeah.
I, I don't, I understand what you're saying, and we, and we obviously have to have a left turn lane there at the, but that, we get a lot of questions, like, I know Tunsil Pratt, when we first looked at this, he, he lives on Grand River all the way down past the Admiral Gas Station, goes, it's gonna make life more difficult with only one lane flowing out there. We get those kind of questions. So.
I think seeing.
Go ahead.
Seeing the macro or seeing the cars move, um, helps, you know? We are in favor of road diets because we see the improved, uh, safety benefit, but yet they, that's why we had to ask the city to do the impact study, was to make sure that traffic would flow and fi- flow in the future. You know, there's some other areas, I'm not sure if you're familiar, where there have been success, successful road diets. Um, one is in Holt area through the Delhi area. That was converted probably like seven or eight years ago. More recently, um, it's from Mason College Road up to that new road diet has been done. And then if you can imagine, um, Michigan Avenue just east of 127 through the Sparrow area, the Sparrow Hospital area, is going to be a road diet as well. And then that's showing that traffic is still allowed to flow.
I, I un- I understand. I've seen the traffic studies and it all, it looks great with the traffic studies, 'cause it, honestly, when you think about it, you go, oh, we're going from four lanes to three lanes, this is counterintuitive. And, and we've looked through all, we've watched the traffic studies and all those things, but I think where, we've got a lot of residents who.
You see it.
They, they don't see, and right now, we don't have a guarantee that we're ever gonna get that green arrow. And that's where we started, and then we were getting this, hey, we've gotta do the entire road diet with no current guarantee that. So I guess that's what we're trying, we want everyone to know where we started.
Do you want, just to clarify, where do you want the green arrow?
At Putnam and Grand River.
The, the main intersection.
From Putnam onto Grand River?
Turning left onto Grand River?
Turn, turning left. Or, or turning.
Like Grand River turning left onto Putnam, Putnam turning left onto Grand River, so that whole left-hand turn.
Correct, that is not a guarantee that you would get that.
Right.
So that is not a condition of the road diet.
No.
The two, they're two separate things that, um, so you have to say it started that way, it's a little confusing to me, too, that I don't think we would say you have to have a road diet to have a, a green arrow.
What, my understanding was where all this started was we came to MDOT asking for that, and this is what we were given, was we were told, well, you, we can have that, but this is, if you wanna safer intersection, this is, this is, this is what you can get.
I, I don't know that is fact. That history is before me and before them, I, I.
So, so, yes, John?
Again, operating, operating under the assumption that that was the only pathway to get a, a turn signal at that intersection was a road diet? I mean, I think it's fair to say that's the assumption that we've all been operating on. So if that's different, that, it's exactly what it is, different. It's different.
It could help. I'm not gonna say it's, it's not gonna get you there, but it's, it's not a guarantee that it's gonna get you.
Well, we're not, we're not, we're not, you know, no one's trying to put anybody on the spot, but again, the, the six of them plus one missing have to make the policy decision that is, is, you know, we, the idea was safety. It's, it's not, and, and we know there's, 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 there's bike lanes and et cetera, but that's not the primary driving force for this. It's safety at that intersection.
Correct, that's where we started all this.
Well, and I, and I mean, one thing you do need to look at is when there's one lane, you don't have that blind spot of that car behind it. So, you know, there are some advantages to having a road diet, but I don't think that they are the same project. And incidentally, um, I will say some of the comments that we received were more on the local side than the trunk line side.
So then, let me ask this. If the road diet were to be put in place, then would we need to request a, an additional study to validate the need for the left-hand turn light?
Yes.
Okay.
But we can't do that until you have a left turn lane.
Right, correct, correct.
You don't need a left turn lane on Putnam, you don't need necessarily a road diet on Grand River.
Right, you need the left turn lane on Putnam, and that's where the, you know, honestly.
But so in, this is a roundabout way of saying, though, that we need the road diet first in order to have a left turn lane, because we're not gonna get a left turn lane unless we do the road diet, then one lane and the other.
On Putnam.
Yeah.
Putnam needs a left turn lane. To have a protected phase, you would need a left turn lane. It does not currently have a left turn lane.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So if you did that improvement, that would be one study. Okay? Now, until you get that study, there is significant improvements by having one lane of traffic in each way for turning cars. Right? Right? And then the queuing of that left lane on Putnam, turning left onto Grand River, will help relieve some of that backed-up congestion, where frankly, if it was backed up to, I don't know what street that was, I would turn, I would not wait through that lane. So.
Right. So, so, you know, I think it's safer for the residents, right, for those areas, too. So, you know, a lot of things need studies. We, MDOT relies on data, and we also do rely on community, you know, input. This is your community. If you want our trunk line to have a road diet, we are in support of it because we do believe that they are safer. If it meets all of the validations that shows that, um, traffic can flow, things are good, you know, twenty years out, we're gonna say yes. You know, there are many communities who, um, are trying to do road diets through trunk lines, uh, in their area. Some of the other improvements at the intersection are, are really good, too. I mean, it's, there's a lot of, um, combination of ideas and strategies and countermeasures to protect safety.
Have you ever had a community implement a road diet and decide they don't like it and go back to the way it was before?
Not in our community, in MDOT maybe, yeah. Not, not that I know of. I heard about something in the U.P. once, but.
Yeah, but I mean, this is a very unique situation, right? And, you know, two, two MDOTs, and because I used to work where I, to be able to use federal dollars to do a project like this and coordinate with trunk line, there, there are not many done like this.
Right.
And so, um, to be honest, I was pretty proud that we could use local funds to help, I mean, just, just the way it all lined up and, and not be one hundred percent money.
Right.
And then just another note, 'cause we do receive a lot of comments, uh, the funding that is being used for this cannot be done, used for road maintenance or road construction or rehabilitation. It is specifically for congestion.
Correct.
So I just wanted to make that, 'cause that's a definitely, uh, one of the comments I heard was, well, this template comes from. The White House in this special bucket that can only be used for congestion relief.
All right, excellent. Yes, Steve?
And you ladies will be at the, um, public session, so that the public.
We will have staff members there. Uh, we are gonna speak on how the road diet is beneficial, uh, overall, and I believe the city is gonna talk more about the impacts to Putnam and the community, um, on Grand River. But, you know, the other one, I, I mean, I, I rattle every comment that came in, so I just want you to know that. And they were heard, um, you know, I'm not gonna say, is everyone gonna be happy in the beginning? It's changed. But, you know, I just, that's why I really do point to these other examples of other communities that implemented these road diets, and, you know, they probably have had the same challenges your, your city has had.
Other questions for our representatives while we have them here? Okay, moving along, um, we have our construction project update. John?
Yeah, thank you. So, um, the projects that we have, um, in progress, uh, to talk about North Putnam, um, the plan is for that project to start up again around April fifteenth. So that's, that's still on target for that. Talk about Williamson Lloyd for a second. We are gonna have a, a public open house for Williamson Lloyd on March twelfth, which is Tuesday. It's gonna be from five to six-thirty. That's gonna be, it's right before the ZVA meeting. And the reason we're, we're moving that off is discussing with the engineers and with, uh, Iron Horse, who's, who won that contract, um, because of the, the favorable weather, they're looking at starting earlier, and that means around March eighteenth. Um, the good news is they'll be done sooner than, and they won't linger on in the summer. Right now, the tentative schedule has them starting March eighteenth and, and as, if, if, you know, assuming the weather holds, may finish with both of those projects by Memorial Weekend, so. Um, and those are full reconstructions, there's utilities involved. I know the, the residents of Lloyd have been living with, uh, Consumers Energy doing their gas project, and, and residents of Williamson went through it last fall, like, particularly last summer, so. Excuse me, it was part of the prep work for that. So, um, Phil Westmoreland's here from Spicer, and we had our project meeting today. He can help answer any questions you might have, so. And it'll be, the, the open house format will be very similar to North Putnam. Um, we'll work, work, uh, tomorrow and the next day on getting letters out to all those residents and then, and having something on our website and our Facebook.
Okay. All right, great. Any questions for John regarding our project updates? Okay? Yes, Dan?
The, with our public, public meeting for Williamson Lloyd on the twelfth, are we sending anything out to residents on those streets specifically, or?
It'll be the area, yeah, but Winston and Love and McKinley, yeah, absolutely. We'll do the same on Lloyd.
Okay. Excellent. All right, next down our discussion items is communication from Williamson Community Schools regarding housing. John?
Yeah, thank you. So we touched on this a little bit at our, at our visioning, visioning session. Um, we did have, uh, school board, uh, President was there, I believe, and then also, uh, Dr. Speno was there, so we had, had a good, I guess, starting point discussion. You know, we received a letter from the school on February twelfth, and there were over seven, seven questions, a couple of them were departers, but, um, I sent out some info to, to all of you, just, just to have some context, um, as we head towards those discussions. That first meeting, it's, it's next week, and forgive me if I don't love dates, I'm not gonna be.
I think it's the sixth.
I'm not gonna be in the office next week, so. But I think it's, it's a good idea if at least, can't be more than three, but at least but at least three council members go to represent the, the city and really start those discussions. And then, I fully intend to be at all of the future meetings for that. Just a calendar clue, so. And just, if I can on the information that was sent out, just pulled some graphics on area school districts and some of the trends. If you notice, since we've been about the same enrollment since about 2010, and again, that's been discussed quite a bit, that keeping that enrollment number where it is, a lot of that is enhanced or increased numbers of School of Choice students. So that's part of it. You can see, you know, some of the districts, Fallonville, Perry, for example, have really, really trended downward over the past several years. Bath has been, Hazlewood as well, has been anecdotally talked about as, you know, skyrocketing growth, and the, the school numbers don't really show that on the trend data. Mason and Oakham is, I don't know if I put Oakham is on there or not. I left it off, because it's a big district, but they've also experienced quite a significant growth, so. Just a, just a little bit of graph to help frame the discussion. There is a map on the overall geographic area of the school board, or the school, just to put it in context, like, you know, where we sit. I mean, obviously, geographically, we're right in the middle, but we're about, you know, 2.5% of the landmass, so I thought it was important to see that on a map. And then, one of the last things I, I sent was the, the population pyramid, and it's from census data. And again, you know, you can use data however you want, but it does show that we're at the younger ages, and this is in town, in the city of Williamson, that we have, I don't know, something like 380, 0 to 5-year-olds. Thank you, Mr. Clanyon, for supporting that issue.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Ryan, I think you're out of that age bracket now. But then, we have this anomaly where, in a kind of track, we talked about this a little bit at the visioning session, that in, you know, 2007, 2008, there were a lot of younger folks that, that, because the economy was awful, and people moved out of the area, moved out of the state, and so there was sort of a void in that 15-age, 15-year-old age category. And I don't know what data the school has on that. I assume it's the same, because that's from census data. But it really shows that, you know, we're trending in the right direction, at least in the city limit, as far as younger people living in town, so. Again, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the, the stuff that I sent, or, you know, kind of the lead into the meeting. I think it's important that we go and listen and, and see where the discussion takes.
Yes, Scott?
So, I noticed on here that Hazlewood's gone from 1840, and then through the years down to 1006. So do you know the implication of what happens in a school system when that kind of situation happens? Like, what happens to their situation? Is it still okay there, or are they hurting?
Well, I guess, I guess, my comment would, to that would be, you know, typically, schools, the, you know, they have large buildings, and that's some of the cost, but the majority of the cost are personnel. And so, if their, the per pupil count is down, then that's, that's fewer people working at the school. And it's really, you know, for the school to decide what that number is. So. I mean, less, less money means less kids, means less teachers in the classroom. I mean, I think that's what it means.
Yeah, because Adam came in and was talking about that here, and how the, that was, he was perceiving that as being pretty catastrophic to, you know, on the verge of the state taking over or something?
I mean, that theoretically can happen if you have a school system that fails. We're nowhere near that.
No, not, right, not now, but he's-
Nor, and the assertion or the allegation that School of Choice is going to go away is just, it's a fallacy.
Correct.
There's no way, because both sides love it. So, there's no reality where School of Choice ever goes away. So I understand the need to, or the desire to have more in-city, even though we're only two square miles. Somehow, having the ability to fill the school with that, but that's like 6,000 houses we'd have to build in the city. And I don't think anybody wants 6,000 more houses in the city of Williamson.
Right.
So there, yeah. I don't, I don't foresee a reality where we actually end up in a situation like DPS, where we lose control of our own school district. There's just not, that's not reality for us.
If you, if you go back and you look at some of, some of the meetings where they authorized their first letter, they were talking about consolidating schools, like, schools consolidating with Marshall and the, all these different things. And I, if you, if you look at the, if you look at the data that John provided us with, and even some of the other data that we've got, we're, we're not in that situation. We're, we're not, we're not close to that situation. But, you know, I, I think it's important that we have the conversation, but the, the numbers are the numbers. They're, they're looking for, for 25% of school, of, of, they have, 25% of the school is School of Choice. They have the belief that School of Choice could go away at any time. They're not comfortable with it. Number, they want 25% to be from living in the area. Well, only 30% of our citizens have kids in the school. So to get the numbers that they want, to get that 25% that, that is a lot of homes that have to be built, and we're, yeah.
Any, yes, Tom?
Yeah, I got one question. So, this has been kind of an ongoing discussion. I kind of feel like we've been pedaling our bike, but not getting real far in the discussion, which we've had too hard. You know, the big thing is, you know, they want more residents to live in the Williamson School District that attend the Williamson Schools. And we agree, that's cool. And we've said, hey, there's land property available. We're not standing in the way of developers doing something with it. Have they came to us, to the city, and said, well, we think you should do X or Y, and it would increase, or? Because we're, we're kind of like, our hands are a little bit tied. There's property available, we don't own it.
Right.
Our zoning's in line to allow developers to come in and do whatever they want?
Yep.
Not whatever they want.
Within reason.
Within reason.
Yeah. So I mean, what, what factors do we have any control over as far as this bringing more people to the Williamson School District?
And as, as far as this city of Williamson proper, we've done all we can do. And that's been this ongoing repetitive discussion with, with the school district. And I think it is the same repetitive discussion that the townships are having with them. You know, we're not in the business of property, you know, building property, property management, anything like that. The parcels that are owned are owned by private entities. Developers would need to seek them out to purchase that. And then, you know, if it met the zoning requirements, that they could build. But realistically, I don't, I think Dan's right. You would have to build a tremendous amount of houses in order to satisfy that, the number that they're looking for. So, you know, we can go and, and listen to their comments and suggestions again next week, but at the end of the day, you know, it's just a continuous repetitive conversation we're having. John?
Just that, no one said there'd be math tonight, so bear with me. But the, the current population of the geographic boundary of the school district is about 12,000, and that's all the, you know, all the townships in the city. And if you take out the School of Choice, which is about 600 kids, and I'm rounding up a little bit, rounding it up, that, that, that leaves about 1,200 students. So 12,000 people yields about 12,000 students, or 1,200 students, sorry. So to make up that 600, it's just simple math, because, you know, the average, in Michigan, the average household is 2.2 people now. And our state is, is trending downward as far as population. But to make up that, just using that simple math, it would take 3,000, sorry, 6,000 additional homes, because it's about a factor of about 10%.
Would have to one of times our population.
Correct.
Correct.
And I guess my question back to the, to the school district would be, yes, we have kids coming in that want to attend Williamson because of School of Choice? I'd like to know if there are kids that have left Williamson and attended outside Schools of Choice?
I have, it's 92.
92, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
No, it's Dr. Sweeney provided that.
Okay, all right.
Tommy asked if the school had asked us any questions on things we could do. The second letter that we got, when they announced this latest meeting, they had a list of questions. And one of them on there, I, I just, I don't know that we can, we can answer in the way they want. And it's what variances we can offer for development. And just having been on ZBA for, for six years, I, I can't tell them what variances for a, for a property or a project we'd be willing to offer before we see a specific property. Those are all site plans specific.
That's kind of an as-needed thing, right?
So, you know, those are some of the questions they're asking. And I don't, I don't know that we can, we can get into any of that, because you have to know what it is. And, and we can get ourselves into some murky waters if we try to answer those.
Yeah, I didn't get the feeling he wanted him and School of Choice altogether. I thought, the feeling I got was that he was concerned that there was that many. Not that there wouldn't be some, I suppose.
Sure. Okay, all right, great discussion. And again, we, you know, let's make sure that we are mindful that we should only have three council representatives there next week. So, we can talk about that offline, who would like to attend that meeting. All right, moving along on our agenda, we did not receive any correspondence, so I'll go right into our department head report. So, John, I'll come back to you, city manager.
I mean, just about every board and committee has met this, this month, or will meet this month, so that's a good thing. Friends of Williamson Park is meeting tomorrow, their, their monthly meeting. And one of the, they're actually having a pre-meeting to talk about the, the potential of the chainsaw art in the park event. So I'll be, I'll be at that on our behalf. And so, that's really about all I have, but thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, chief?
Yes, thank you. Just a staffing update. Tonight, we're putting an additional reserve officer on the roster, with two more in the process, so that's positive. With the addition of the gentleman that will be attending the academy starting May, we'll be full staff after he graduates. Blue Mask was Sunday at St. Mary's. It was well-attended by a diverse group of people. We had representation from LISA, Chelsea Police, Oakland County Sheriff's Office, two gentlemen from the Attorney General's Office Investigations. So it, it went very well.
Nice.
The traffic control, no left turn at Riverside Highland is working incredibly well. The crossing guards have a lot of positive comments. The superintendent has positive comments. We've been up there doing enforcement, stopped a few cars, but we're still in the education phase. However, that's going to be segwaying soon.
Great.
The, that's all I have.
All right, great. Have you had any residents from Riverside approach you during this new traffic shift to give their comments?
I have not.
All right, great. Well, then, maybe everything's working well.
That's good.
Yeah, that's a good thing, excellent. Well, thanks so much for that, chief. And glad to hear that that's working out over there at the elementary school area. Committee and subcommittee reports. Anybody like to share from their boards, any information? Yes, Steve?
We had a TIPA 2A and 2B meeting last week, and having to do with the Ice House project that has been around for a while, but no fruition to that project yet. But we're going to send out an RFP, a request for proposal, to see if there are any businesses like we had received before that want to enter into some type of agreement to put a business in the Ice House. Additionally, because we've had some not positive success with businesses, we are also sending out a request for a proposal that will have individuals come in and tell us what we would have to do with the city to get the building so it's safe, secure, and then we might be able to lease it out. What do you call it, a white box situation? And John, maybe you can expand or?
You're rolling, you're doing great.
So that, that is on the way. And the other thing that the city manager with staff is going to do is we have some funds, is it the TIPA 2A or 2B?
TIPA 2A and, and EDC.
So we have some funds that are, are sitting there, and we're going to be looking for projects that would make sense to utilize some of those funds, rather than just leave those funds sitting there.
Great. Thanks for the update, appreciate it. Anybody else? All right. We did have a DDA meeting. We are continually talking about, you know, what can we do in our downtown district that is beneficial for our current businesses, future businesses? We've been talking a lot about community events, how we can partner with our service organizations or other groups in our Williamson area to make sure that our events are the best that bring and draw people into Williamson. So there will be more information coming on that. Also, we talked about our branding. We are going through a rebranding of, you know, how we look and feel. Our website is almost ready, up and running. I think we've got a beta test coming up soon, so we'll have a new look and feel for our city website. So, you know, just continually moving forward with, with DDA business. Lynda Chapman, who's a part of Friends of Williamson Park, actually came to the DDA and talked about the, the one about the chainsaw art carving for those trees down in McCormick Park that are originally from the tornado that came through in 2007. A lot of those carvings have met their end of life. And so, the idea is to bring in chainsaw artists from, you know, national, possibly international, do some new carvings for the park. It's kind of neat and exciting that we want to be able to maintain that in that park, because McCormick is a great park, and that's part of it, so. With that, now I will move to audience participation again, with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to come forward at this time? Okay, all right. Hi, thank you. Could you state your name and your address, please?
My name is Jennifer. I live at 320 South Theater here in Williamson. Forgive me, I'm not much of a public speaker. But as a downtown business owner, I would also like to express my disdain, or my disagreement, for the Dollar General proposal. I hope that you'll be having an open house to discuss that with the townspeople as well. You guys don't want a Dollar General? You don't want the kind of demographic that it brings. Our downtown businesses are what makes Williamson special. And if you cloud that up with more franchises, it will lose that charm. And it will bring in people that are not healthy for this small, wonderful community that we live in. And so, I just hope that you'll give the people a chance to speak and inform them about why on earth you would want a Dollar General here, especially down by Tractor Supply. It's not on the public transit. It's, the people don't, it's just not a good idea. So I hope you have an open house, and thank you.
Your word. Thank you for speaking, I appreciate it. Anyone else for public comment at this point?
Hello, yes, me again, you're all cringing, I know.
State your name, please.
Jeff Codet.
Thank you.
And our business is at 139 South Park.
Thank you.
I was glad to see a few questions be asked tonight of M.DOT, because I think the last time I came, and I said, so we have to do this in order to get that arrow, everybody was like, yes? And now we're finding out tonight that, no. That's not actually what we had, what has to be done. The main reason for me speaking here tonight is I have to tell you that I'm very disappointed, and Brandon, it's in you, and I think you know this. I was very disappointed in the fact that you called out a citizen, and, and basically, in quote, in, I'll quote it, air quote it, say, they incited an uproar with their posts. People are allowed to post things, and all that lady did was post about the March meeting. That's all she did. You went on to your post to say that no one has brought any legitimate concerns, when in fact, I myself brought concerns about semi-traffic and turning and the truck lane. And so are you the be-all and-all of what's a legitimate concern, sir?
Well, this is public particip, or audience participation right now, and typically, during audience participation, we don't- I'm not going to allow us to get into any type of argument or anything like that.
So then I'll just say, you know, my, my, my thing, I'm not, I'm not riled up about it. I stated it on Facebook, and many other people agreed. But I, I really hope that you do apologize, because I, I think an apology is, is required for the actions that you did. You're in politics, and people are going to take a different point of view. And if you can't take that heat, then get out of the kitchen. Okay?
Thanks so much. Anyone else for audience participation at this time? State your name and your address, please.
Amanda, 129 South Putnam, a business owner here in town. This is my first attended meeting. Not really sure how this goes, but I would like to say that I'm very scared for this road diet, as far as our customers, my patients. The parking spots that would be removed from doing this, I think would harm the businesses that are downtown greatly. As it is right now, we don't have very much parking on our side. People complain every day, like, oh my gosh, there's no parking out here. A lot of the older people will say, like, I had to go home and come back. So if we put this in, we lose those spots. I'm very concerned that we'll lose our business to DNW here in town. I understand safety is a big thing, I get that, but you guys really should look a little bit bigger as far as what other things that you guys are impacting when you make those decisions. Because I'm, I honestly, I'm very scared for, for our business.
You did great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone else at this time for audience participation? All right? Chief?
Yes?
All right.
If you can, it's for Lisa here, who just said 1296 West Grand River.
All right, thank you.
I still do have some concerns about the road diet. they're, they found other ways to get around the road diet. Delhi in particular, I was a medic there for 10 years. They don't go down Cedar where the road diet is. And I mentioned this before, but we had talked about the fact you weren't looking at putting in the...
Islands.
The islands, which did give me a certain amount of relief. But, you know, they have areas to get around that road diet area from where they're at. I have talked to Pierce about the turn, turn radius on our ladder truck. And with the road diet, from what I've seen, and I'd like to see some real numbers, we won't be able to turn there.
You mean Putnam to Grand River?
Yeah. No, well, Putnam to Grand River or Grand River.
Right on the front.
Yes. Because we won't, we won't be able to make that turn. Well, we wouldn't eat in the center lane, we would be...
Not be on the right lane.
You mean not just normal traffic?
No, I'm talking about even how we would get, how we would get through there. But if we weren't running priority turn there as well. And we're just worried that there's no place for the cars to go. So essentially, if we have something on that section of Putnam, we're going to have to turn, probably come around School Street or right next to D and W and that corner would be, would be pretty tight.
Would not ideal.
Yeah, not ideal. So I do have some concerns about that. And the other thing that concerns me is as we seem to be increasing in car accidents all the time, especially on the highway, we spend a lot of time out there. When the highway's closed, you know, the truck traffic comes down through. And I'm just not sure how that's going to flow. It's, it's, I just have my concerns and I just wanted to, I just wanted to voice the concerns because it, it gets dicey now trying to get through there with a truck when they can get over. And it, it all has to do a lot with that angle. If it was a straight shot, it would be, be a lot easier, but with the angle. There's also going to be some time for, as our community is aging for, you know, our, our seniors, we'll say, to, to kind of get used to this new traffic pattern and everything. So I just, I just wanted to bring forth those concerns. And if you guys could get me some actual numbers of widths so I can...
Yeah, I'm sure.
Can I figure them out?
We can talk too. I think we have the, with South Putnam, I know we have them on Grand River, but generally we, like you said, we do not have pedestrian islands. That's one of the reasons why.
Yes, thank you.
Is so that generally pull to the right for sirens and lights, right? And so that they can drive the center turn lane. We are not moving any curves, so that's one thing. It's just do you have willing, willing participants to move over?
Which they struggle with now.
Well, sirens and lights pull to the right.
Anyway, I just wanted to voice those concerns. I'm not like totally against it, but I, I do have concerns with us. Because we just don't have real good ways to get around.
Agreed. Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'm Jim Bell from Bell's Party Time. Not to talk about that, but I'm retired from MDOT and, but it's been 20 years. And unless MDOT's changed their methods, I just thought you ought to know that. I know that if you're getting a new signal, it's based totally on fatalities. It's sad to say, but so many people got to get killed before they'll do it. Not that way anymore?
No.
Well, I worked in traffic safety and we wrote the work orders for traffic signals.
Signals have a separate funding bucket, right? And we do believe that the signal at Grand River and Putnam is slated for a future modernization. If you look at the, the current signal that's out there, it does not have the capabilities for a left turn phase. So that's, so you kind of need all the pieces to come together, right? So part of it would be to kind of using time efficiently is to put a left turn lane in Putnam, study it in time for when the new signal comes, so that all of these things can align in the least amount of time.
That would be actuating left turns?
Yeah. And that's our goal. Like, you, like I said, that left on Putnam is one of the top 10 congested spots in the three county region. More than, you know, it ranks right up there with like 127, you know, so, so, and I can show you that document as well. But that's part of the reason why frankly, we work so hard with local federal funding to find it so that we can time projects efficiently and effectively.
But that doesn't have anything to do with the signal? The money doesn't have anything to do with the signal?
No, the signal's already slated. It's in our call for projects in the next five years. I can't remember what year it is, but it's already been identified as a signal that needs to be modernized. So that means its signal is at the end of its life. It does not have capac, capabilities that current signals have, right? Technology wise. And so we would want to upgrade that. One, because it's part of the rotation, right? Take some of your assets that are aging out. Yep. And then at the same time, have the plan so that it can be studied, so that we can see, there's no guarantee if a left phasing is possible. But right now, that current signal does not have that capability and you don't have a left turn lane to have a designated left. Right. And I think that's, once again, where we need to do some more education on what needs to happen on Putnam and what can, can happen on Grand River. Okay? Because I think there's still some education that can be done and that's what we hope to do at the open house. Great, thank you.
I missed out on part of the other.
I'm sorry.
But on the other side of Putnam in front of, opposite the hardware, you're going to take that parking out?
I believe the local agency has discussed that, John.
What do you mean, let's?
And we, and we did this.
But since Mr. Bell, since Andrea took Mr. Bell's public comment, and we don't normally answer questions, I mean, in order to get that turning radius, the parking, that's, that's been, since last year, the parking would be removed. It's the only way to get to dimension. Again, that's the, that's the, the, you know, the tough decisions or the, the tough choices that have to be made. So, but a lot of these are things that, all of these things will be covered.
Yep.
Some people like them, some people won't, but the, there's been no, there's no hiding from the fact that the plan, you can see it on our website right now, the, the seven parking spots on the west side of South Putnam would have to be taken out in order to get the, the traffic.
And we can, we can dive deeper into this during that MDOT open house that we will have in two weeks. My apologies. No, that's fine, that's fine. And I appreciate you wanting to get up and speak. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment at this time?
My name's Dave Jones. I have an office on 148 South Putnam Street. It's awfully, of course, we all look out for our own self-interest, so I know it's selfish sounding, but you know, when you talk about removing seven parking places that my clients use regularly, it, it obviously gets my attention. Also, when I walk to the office, it is unusual that, as I'm walking down Putnam Street at 7:30 in the morning, it's unusual that there aren't two or three pickup trucks parked on that side of the street with fellows running across to the hardware store and back, rotating pretty quickly. So these are highly used parking places. I have, most of my clients are middle-aged to elderly. And it is frequently, people call and say, okay, now where do I park when, because they don't want to walk far or they can't walk far. And so we tell them, well, there's, there's a handicap parking place almost in front of my building and there is usually parking on the street. If we eliminate that, then, okay, they can go around the block. On Middle Street, very often parked full already. So, I mean, parking is a little tight. And so when you take out seven places, it's going to, I, I think it will have an impact. I hope people would still come to see me even if they have to walk a block. I, I don't know, but I know it'll inconvenience folks, they won't like it. The hardware store, I don't know. If a fellow can't jump out of his truck and run across the street and get something and come back, he might keep driving and go somewhere else. So I think, anyway, I'm concerned about the impact of eliminating the parking in the interest of traffic flow. And, and when, in the summer, we frequently go to little tourist towns, in tourist areas, and there's a lot of traffic and it moves very slow. But the people want that traffic and they want, and, and the slow is just the price of being there then. So I'm not convinced that, unless there's an awful lot of injuries that are occurring, I'm not convinced that improving the flow of traffic is in our public interest. If people have to go slow through town, then they'll have to look at the shops as they go by anyways.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment at this time? All right, moving along, we have our council member comments. I'll start down with this one with Dan Ryan.
Couple things. Obviously, when you, when you're looking at a project that's going to start removing parking in your downtown area, it's not, it's not an easy thing. But we've also, there's been a lot of comments, nobody knew we were doing this. Well, we've been talking about this, I got on council 2018, 2019, something like that, long before the DDA parking lot behind the hardware was redone. And we were discussing this project at that point in time. And when that back parking lot back there was redone, there were actually additional parking spaces that were made available back there when, when that was done. And that was part of this calculus that this was being talked about, was that there was additional things happening back there. Now, now it's been so long and we've been in this process that now we take for granted the fact that that additional parking happened back there. Now, does that mean it's going to be easy for the folks that are on Putnam if all that parking was, no. But, but there, that, that, that's how long we've been talking about this and working on this, is those things were, that was, some of that was baked in the cake. It, it's, it's not easy and it's, there's a lot of, a lot of calculus that's going to, but that, that, that's how long we've been discussing this, was that, where it looks and goes, oh, that's an amazing parking lot. Well, that was terrible. And when we redid all that, we were discussing this project at the same time.
Thank you, Dan, appreciate it. Scott?
Yeah, just an encouragement to go to the theater and see Maytag Virgin, it's getting really good reviews.
Excellent, thank you. Brandon?
Happy belated birthday to chief. And I will say as a parent that the traffic has been great. Now that we got rid of that left turn, it's moving faster and I'm willing to get in the hot school faster, so good suggestion.
Thanks. Steve?
I just want to thank all of the individuals that came out. It's unfortunate that it's a, it's a sticking point that has individuals come out, but that's important that you come in, you air your concerns. And so I, I appreciate that. And difficult decisions have to be made in, in the safety issue for me, as it relates to the road diet. That's the number one thing. And if we have documentation verification that is going to improve the safety, then the negatives of it will be outweighed by the positive of safety, in my opinion. The other thing that I want to emphasize with all of you being here, this is the best way for you to be back in your community and be able to respond to questions that someone might have, the saying that, what about this or what about that? This is not a secret society. It's, it's much better for all of us when we have individuals who are hearing what we're saying and giving us feedback. And with the open houses that we're going to be having, we can get more of that outside of the council session and get more involvement, more questions answered by the public. Well, thank you for coming.
Wait, Steve, Tom?
Yeah, I'm going to kind of echo what Steve said. He kind of took the words right out of my mouth.
Just one, one thing, I did notice that the chief, when he talked about the older population, he went to me, he didn't go to you.
Yeah, no, I really appreciate people showing up, being part of the conversation. I appreciate people voicing concerns. Every time we have people stand up and voice concerns about anything on our agenda, usually I take some and like, huh, I guess I didn't consider that, you know, some more to think about. So I enjoy it and I appreciate it. And, you know, we're just sitting up here as representatives for all of you, just like we are too. I mean, I live right on grade number two. I'm not sure I'm crazy about the road diet, but, you know, from what I've seen and, you know, the last two years of studies and presentations and different things, it looks to me like it's probably a good idea, even though it's probably going to be harder to get out of my driveway. You know, it is what it is. But thank you for being here and I appreciate it.
I'm going to echo what everybody said. You know, the one thing that I've always tried to stress in this seat and being a part of council and, and being on different boards is we have to be a transparent community. We have to be a transparent city council and with my city staff and everything. And so I appreciate everybody that's come out. We've had meetings where there's just been us. And so having people in the room is great because that means that you're engaged, you're concerned, and we need to hear that. And, and I know that sometimes when we're out in the community, we get that little bit of feedback if we're at D and W or at a restaurant or something like that. So I appreciate everybody that's come out and we definitely take this to heart. I'm super excited about these open houses that we'll be having because that means there's more opportunity for community engagement. And we will learn as we go and hopefully, you know, whatever ends up coming from it, it's going to be better for our city of Williamson, our residents, our businesses. That's almost my biggest concern. And so I truly, truly appreciate it. We are sliding into the last month of no parking on city streets from 2:00 to 5:00 a.m. so that DPW can get out there and get things done. But this amazing, beautiful weather that we're having kind of tells me that we may be done with winter.
There's jinx.
You know, right? But anyways, I want to just say thank you so much for everybody being here this evening and I will go ahead and call it adjourned at 8:26. Thank you.
Can we post next time down mid-city fall?